I'd like to call this meeting to order. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
(Inaudible)
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono.
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mrs. Perez.
Present.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Here. Mr. Mustarel, is there a resolution for executive session?
There is. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education in the City of Vineland School District will convene an executive session for the following reasons outlined in NJSA 10-Q and 4-12. Discussion is about leased property, employment matters, and any matters falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that the confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise her ethical duties as a lawyer.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bono.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mrs. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Yano, do we have any special presentations this evening?
Yes, Mr. Russo and I will present in the New Jersey Public School Collaborative. I'll be down at the podium in a moment. Tonight, Mr. Russo and I would like to present to you some of the work that we've partnered on with the Rutgers Public School Collaborative. So we're going to provide you a summary and some forward planning information. Okay, thank you. So the collaborative, what is it? It's about bringing stakeholders together in our public education system to work on systems and initiatives for the improvement of teaching and learning the core of what we do as a school district. This program and research has been conducted by Rutgers since 2013. A book was written, Democracy and Reform in Public Schools: A Case for Collaborative Partnerships, by Saul Rubenstein, Charles Heksher, and John McCarthy, all who work at Rutgers University. Saul Rubenstein is one of the professors that we've had a chance to meet with. The research shows that there's 40 years of reform has largely failed, reform efforts such as Abbott in our school district here, throughout the state, and nationally. But what has been found to be effective are collaborative partnerships between management and the union, between central office, school leaders, management, and the associations, UAW, VEA, so on and so forth. When unions and management collaborate and work together to make decisions, you actually can find 12.5% increase in student test scores in math and language arts.
So when Mr. Yano first brought this to me and he gave me a book, I was very skeptical, as I am of most, you know, changes in education or so-called educational reform models. But as I read this, I delved really deeply, I read it cover to cover, and I actually read most of it twice and underlined things. This is an educator's dream, because this is a paradigm shift, it's a mindset change. Forty years of whole-school reform or reform efforts have largely failed, not here in Vineland, but across the United States, because they're led by the wrong people. They're either led by industry, who are not necessarily educators, who have different motives, or they're only led by one part of the stakeholder, or one group of stakeholders, right? Be they school administrators or whomever. But what this does is it shifts the paradigm, and it says the answer, and the only way really, to improve our schools and improve the outcomes for our students are to involve all the stakeholders together who have a say, who have some agency in what we do. And when you engage people, you make everyone a part of the process, you have greater buy-in. It uses the association or the union in general terms, because we're the folks that provide the education. And many educational efforts that we've done across the country, in New Jersey, and even here, right in our past, have largely failed because they have failed to gain educator buy-in. This model's different. It gains educator buy-in by making us part of the process. And if there's one thing that educators all want to do is to be part of the solution, we need and want, right, to work on some things together. So this shifts the focus of what school administrators, boards, and unions do from that confrontational thing about grievances or contracts every couple of years, to the one goal that we all share. Let's put most of our energy into the goals that we share, which is making outcomes for students better, which is increasing student learning. If we put most of our energy into that and most of our time, that moves it forward. So what we've done, Mr. Yano invited me, I read the book, members of central administration and some folks met, we discussed some pilot schools early in the fall, and we met with Saul Rubenstein over Zoom, we had a virtual meeting. In February, we actually traveled up to Rutgers, New Brunswick, and we went to the School of Labor and Management Studies, and we had a wonderful workshop. This proves the model. You know, essentially, the genesis behind this is that when you put different minds together who see problems from different positions, you get better solutions. So there's a little simulation where you do something as an individual, and then you do it with a group of people. And they collect all the results, and the results quantify mathematically that the group results are always significantly better. And that's what this book outlines. If you don't have it, either the district will buy them for you, or the association will, for your summer reading at the beach. And it proves it, right? Moving test scores up is huge, 12.5%, but that's just a small part. You increase buy-in, you increase morale, you make people want to stay, and you make educators want to engage in the process. So that was the first trip up to New Brunswick. We went again on April the 4th, and we participated in what the Rutgers team calls their inter-district network conference. So we were there with a massive number of other schools from across New Jersey, some who were visiting as far as from South Africa. The entire nation of South Africa is adopting this as their public school model. We met with what were called role-alike teams. Union people met with some other union people about how it works in Newark, how it works in Metuchen, how it works in Delran, and what it's done for them. And then in the afternoon, we, as Vinelanders, Mr. Yano, Mrs. DiMarci, and representatives from our four schools, we sat and we brainstormed together, and I think it's, we have some really exciting things planned.
On June 17th is when we had our follow-up meeting here at Landis. We brought the four school teams together, the leaders, union, and the participants, and we had a great conversation about what will we do next. And what we came up with is during the summer, central office and each of the school teams, we're going to develop a series of brochures, activities, introductory materials, so that when the pilot schools kick off their programs in September, they'll have a unified presentation that kind of defines what the collaborative public school model looks like. The schools that are involved are Wallace, Barcy, Winslow, and Johnstone. And then in fall of 2025, those pilot schools will begin forming their collaborative partnerships and their buildings to sustain these collaborative efforts. At the district level, we'll also be starting, you know, our district-level collaboration teams, central office inviting in the association leaders as we plan professional development, let's say, as we look at evaluation data, as we set up assessment work. We're trying to work more closely together, as Mr. Russo noted. When we bring in different perspectives, we'll get a better final outcome.
So this works because it goes beyond that traditional conflict that unions typically have with management, right? Because we, instead of working 85% of our time on the 15 things that we disagree on, we're going to spend 85% of our time on the 85% of what we do agree on, right? When you involve educators in school-based decisions and planning, it significantly increases staff and, most importantly, educator buy-in. When educators buy in to the efforts and the models, the programs, the curriculum, it has better outcomes for students. Happy, content educators are better educators. Better educators, of course, help our students succeed. What the schools also report that are already participating in this is a reduction in grievances. Because what this does is it forces the people on the school level and on the district level to talk to each other. That's the genius, right? It creates an opportunity for dialogue. I've said for many years at this microphone and beyond it, that when we talk about any of our problems, we always come to a solution. The problems arise when there is no dialogue. So this builds in a framework to have educators in a school with the management of the school at a district level, yourselves, the central administrators, some of the union leadership. We have dialogue, we're going to work on problems proactively, and that's the key. Almost everything can be solved ahead of time. And with reduction in grievances, we have also less transgency of the teaching staff. You will retain more teachers, the research says and proves, in New Jersey, in California, and about 20 or 30 schools nationwide. People don't like to leave these schools as employees. So it's a joint design for professional learning. Teachers, administrators are going to collaborate and map out their professional development. For example, these are efforts that will make everything more relevant, and more relevancy in the classroom is what leads to student growth.
And just following up on that, as we work together collaboratively with our association reps and teachers and our collaborative teams, you know, we'll also become more efficient, because we'll be able to identify programs that might be better aligned to the needs of our students by involving our educators around the front line in that decision-making process. So we become more efficient, we become more focused, we are able to make better decisions when we bring in our VASA reps, our VEA reps, and our central office folks as well, with the support of our Board of Education. And as stated, the evidence is clear. When you have these collaborative partnerships, you build morale, you build buy-in, and you build energy and synergy around your initiatives.
So the Rutgers faculty have done a lot of research in New Jersey and in California and across the country. But New Jersey is now becoming ground zero for where this is working, and it's working at all types of schools, from bigger districts like Newark to smaller districts, to districts that are more impoverished and districts that are more wealthy. What's very important, though, is that the outcomes have even higher impacts in high poverty settings, right? So this is essentially something that we've been waiting for for a long time. Significant predictors of higher and faster-growing test scores. We all know where our scores are and where we would like them to be. This will have the biggest impact and move the needle on that better than any other effort we can make. We don't need AI, we don't need more computers. We need better collaboration between educators, managers, planners, boards, and we can get there. So with teacher collaboration, high-partnership school districts report more frequent, data-driven instructional conversations, better mentoring, cross-grade planning. And the outcomes, besides a significant improvement in student test scores, teacher retention, right? So we're in a situation where we're bleeding staff and we have vacancies. That's all across the United States, not just here. But this is a district that attracts, retains, and will keep people here for careers with a methodology like this.
And just as an example of what it would look like, you know, we have our shared goal, which is to increase student achievement. And then you'll see the district leadership team in the middle there with, you know, composed of a variety of perspectives and professions. Then we have the association, we have the board, and then we have our four pilot schools. Those four pilot schools will then be the entry point for the remainder of the district to look at the success that they're having, and then hopefully expand this in the following years to additional buildings.
So what do we get out of this? As we said, measuring for student test scores at about, on average, language arts and math, 12.5% increase is a national standard. In many cases, it's been more. Districts with high concentrations of poverty have had even higher increases. And this is a given, that student, you know, standardized test scores are not a sole or even necessarily the best indicator, but they are an indicator, right? A rising tide lifts all boats. And when we have good things happening in our schools and our staff feels that they're listened to, they're taken seriously, their views are not only just tolerated or heard, but they become part of the decision-making and part of the conversation. That's what tends to improve instruction. We more efficiently use our resources. There's nothing worse than abandoning things one or two years later because we find out they didn't work. Well, why didn't it work? Because one person picked it. But if you involve greater voices from the get-go of the practitioners, you will find we'll have lower supply budgets, we're not going to waste materials and supplies that we adopt and find out, well, that didn't work, right? We'll probably get it right from day one when there are more voices. So increased impacts for students, more successful teaching, higher-impact teaching. And the last thing that I'll leave you with is the word trust. This is an experiment in some ways, right? And it's something that we invent as we go along. But one thing that we have to learn to do, and what we learned to do with this workshop, is something very difficult, and that's to trust each other, that we're all here for the right reasons, and that's advancing the outcomes for our kids. If we have that in mind, all other things can be taken care of. Thank you.
On this last slide, we just had a couple of stats about who else is involved. We noted it earlier, 31 districts in New Jersey, 250-plus schools, 10,000 teachers, 160,000 students impacted, about 12% of New Jersey schools are involved. And also the entire nation of South Africa, which is really incredible when we had the opportunity to hear from those practitioners at our Rutgers events. So one, I would like to publicly thank Mr. Russo, you know, for the partnership, and it's all about building trust and moving forward together. And thank the board for also supporting this process, this endeavor that we've got ourselves locked into, and to some of our school leaders who will be, you know, helping lead the way in developing this public school collaborative here in Vineland. We are the only South Jersey school district. We will be a lighthouse district for Rutgers, will be the trainers of the next generation when Millville and Bridgeton and the other school districts in South Jersey want to be involved. That's the next step. Thank you.
And now that this endeavor has gotten underway, we really hope to continue it. And of course, the critical juncture is that we want you to be involved in it, right? You're the leaders of our district, and we need you as part of our group and at the table. Thank you.
There's a question.
It sounds like a great program, and I'm just wondering, what, when can we expect, how long down the line before we start to see some results, like test scores and things like that?
It's going to take some time, right? Because, you know, empowering, our schools are not designed for this model, right? We have a very hardcore tradition of, you know, the principal is the leader of the building, the superintendent is the leader of the district. Changing that mindset takes time. The folks who are involved are super excited. I know, I see Ms. Tomlin here and Ms. Rosado from Wallace, I'm not sure if Mr. Pierce is here, but we also, we have these school leaders who are invested in opening up and becoming vulnerable through the process. So it's going to take a couple of years of time, but I think what you'll see is improvements in climate and culture that then lead to kids wanting to be in school, teachers wanting to be in their building every day, and their voice will be heard, better decisions, better climate, and then you'll see the test scores come through. If you want to add something?
Yeah, great question, Mrs. Perez. And I think what we have to do is start slow. That's one of the lessons that they gave us and they cautioned us. If we try to attack everything in year one, we'll run out of energy very quickly, we'll get frustrated, because there's some, you know, conflict involved and a lot of discussion. That takes time. So really, what they recommend is that we try to pick some low-hanging, achievable projects. They can be anything, from beautifying your school, making people feel better being there, right, is a first step. You start to build trust. The teams at the school, the union association leader in the school, or some other educational leaders, the administrators, start to work together, they build a greater degree of trust. The second time we move up, maybe now we're talking about professional development planning or curriculum planning, or, you know, a policy that's going to be in front of you. It could be about cell phones, for example, right? Now, how do we impact kids? And as time goes on, it's a constant process of reevaluation. What did we do? Did it work? Do we retrench? Do we move on to a new goal? And what we're going to see is scaffolding, you know, and then eventually, we're going to see those outcomes. But most of these schools have already been doing this for about 10 years.
I have one question. I see most of these schools, now, the high school, there's no plan to, are any of the schools in New Jersey doing anything like with the high school? Will it reach that high? Or, I know we are not doing that, I'm just curious.
So we started with four schools, small scale, so we could build up some success, build up some positivity, and then we're going to open it up to our other leaders. The leader has to be interested, right? The association in that building, our teachers need to be interested in doing this, because it does take a lot of time and collaboration and trust development. So we hope to eventually get this to all of our schools, but it's a multi-year process.
Curious, because I just saw that they were the lower, you know, level schools, elementary, and then we had...
Just, Mrs. Cottis Patti spinning my whole career at the high school. Change Tate, it's so big.
No, 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 I know that. I was just, I didn't know if it was just targeted for middle and elementary, but if it could, that's what I was asking.
Other districts like Newark are trying to adopt it from pre-K through 12. We just thought in discussions, it's so hard to enact big changes at this big two-building campus, that we wanted to see if we can get it working on a slower scale.
And we started with two elementary and two middle schools.
Comments? So we're ten, it's kind of like what we're doing now with the student collaborations at the schools, correct?
Absolutely.
So, you know, we've touched on it at the middle school and high school level so far, right? What did you say?
Those student-led means, high school, then we brought in middle school, and the plan for next year is to bring in elementary, working with our school leaders at the elementary level, working with fifth-grade students to get their voice, you know, heard as well. So that's the next layer.
And now that you're just going to do more of that with the staffing?
Now, it'll be, you know, working with, let's say, Wallace School is planning a specific instructional event and activity, they'll bring their team together, and instead of a plan being developed by one person, the plan will be developed by the community that is interested in supporting that process, having different outcomes come together, different voices, different perspectives, and just starting from there. So it could be as deep as, you know, setting up the color run at Memorial School, or a multicultural night, or it could be on the day that the school has to develop their building-based professional development day. What would that look like? Having the team come together with teachers, you know, what are we going to offer? Who can present it? How's it going to be designed? So changing that dynamic, that's going to be, I think, where a lot of time will be spent.
Are there questions or comments on the hip report? Seeing none, we have public comment on agenda items or any other item or any other matter. Please limit your time to three minutes and state your name. Mr. Mustarel?
Marita Diaz.
Marita Diaz, 729 West Oak Road, Vineland, New Jersey. Good evening, Superintendent Yano, members of the Vineland Board of Education. I have had the privilege of working in this district for 22 years, and during that time I had the opportunity...
voices, different perspectives, and just starting from there. So it could be as deep as, you know, setting up the color run at Memorial School or a multicultural night, or it could be on the day that the school has to develop their building-based professional development day. What will that look like, having the team come together with teachers? You know, what are we going to offer? Who can present it? How's it going to be designed? So changing that dynamic, that's going to be, I think, where a lot of time will be spent.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments on the HIP report? Seeing none, we have public comment on agenda items or any other item or any other matter. Please limit your time to three minutes and state your name. Mr. Bustrell.
Marita Diaz.
Marita Diaz, 729 West Oak Road, Vineland, New Jersey. Good evening, Superintendent Yano, members of the Vineland Board of Education. I have had the privilege of working in this district for 22 years. And during that time, I had the opportunity to collaborate with a number of outstanding leaders. In all that time, I can say without hesitation, wait, sorry, I have had the opportunity to collaborate with a number of outstanding leaders. In all that time, I can say without hesitation that Mr. Yano has been one of the most committed and effective superintendents I've worked with. Our district thrives because of the equity and structure he has put in place. And under his leadership, our students and staff are given the support they need to succeed. Mr. Yano's dedication to ensure the best interests of both students, staff, and at the forefront of his decision-making has been clear, and it is because of his leadership that we are moving in the right direction. I firmly believe that consistency is the key to the continued success of this district. What is not broken should not be fixed. We've seen the positive impact of Mr. Yano's leadership, and we allow Mr. Yano to continue his leading us towards a brighter future. We all strive to do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Farah Rivera.
Good evening, I'm Farah Rivera, 333 East Walnut Road, Vineland. I am here to support a VHS high school teacher. His name is Mr. Malachi. He's an ELA teacher. We recently found out that he was going to be put on the table to be let go. My daughter is a first-year freshman. She has succeeded her first year at VHS, and we're eagerly happy that she has become this great student. And I want to thank Mr. Malachi for everything that he has done. He has created incentive programs for these students. He has promoted reading. Like, my child has come home and said, Mr. Malachi said, "Put my cellphone away, stop being on social media, and read a book." There aren't too many teachers out here that are still enforcing reading books. We are on our phones all day, on social media, on TikTok. And I just thought that I'd come down here and support Mr. Malachi because I think that what he's done and the programs that he has implemented for these students to read, to put the social media away, to put the phones away, is something great. We need more teachers like him. So I just wanted to come out here and support him and hope that he is given another chance and continues to be a VHS teacher. Thank you.
Carly O'Donohue.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Central Administration, and my fellow administrators who are here tonight. As I close out my first year at Dr. William Menne's School as principal, I wanted to take a minute to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Yano and his entire team for their continued support and leadership. When I began my administrative journey in 2021, Mr. Yano was new to the district. At that time, we were navigating the uncertainty left behind by the pandemic, and I had deep concerns about student achievement, school safety, and overall staff morale. But from the moment I stepped into my role as assistant principal at Menne's, I immediately felt the support from Mr. Yano, his team, and this board. Through Administrator Academy's book studies, school visits, observations, and meaningful constructive feedback, I knew I was a part of a system where leadership was hands-on, collaborative, and focused on real progress. The concerns I once had are now areas where I've seen tremendous growth. With the leadership of Mr. Yano and Mrs. DiMarci, our supervisors, teachers, and fellow administrators, we've made academics a true priority. We've committed to being instructional leaders, digging into data, collaborating in PLCs, and making decisions grounded in what is best for our students. As I reflect on this school year, I'm proud to say that every grade level at Menne's has shown strong growth in both reading and math. The implementation of the new reading program in kindergarten and first grade has been a game changer. For example, 70% of our kindergarten students are now reading on or above grade level. That's not just my success, it's our success as a district team, and it is something I'm incredibly proud of. School safety was another concern I raised early in my career. Under Mr. Yano's leadership, we welcomed Mr. Leonard Wolf, whose presence and initiatives such as armed guards, routine building visits, and consistent communication have made a significant impact. As an administrator and a mother, I'm grateful every day for the steps we've taken to keep our schools safe. Just today, we kicked off our first day of Administrator Academy. Retirees Carmy and Sylvia offered thoughtful advice, reminding us to lean on each other. I'm proud to say that we've built a leadership team here in Vineland where that is truly the case. I can reach out to any colleague and know I'll be met with support, honesty, and willingness to help. That kind of trust makes my job not just fulfilling but enjoyable. To the Board of Education, thank you for being visible, engaged, and committed to our students. Your presence at our school play, our fifth-grade Moving Up Ceremony, and Read Across America have meant so much to our school community. I hope you'll continue to visit Menne's. And finally, to Mr. Yano, thank you for your mentorship and support over the past few years. You've helped transform a passionate kindergarten teacher into a confident, capable leader. A superintendent who calls you when you have back surgery just to check in is a true leader. I'm going to end with this. If you told 10-year-old Carly, who grew up cheering at Vineland High School events with her father, that one day she'd be leading a school in this very district, I'm not sure she would even believe it. Thank you, and let's continue to grow together and do great things for our students and community under the leadership of Mr. Yano and this board.
Shirley Santos.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Santos, a retired bilingual teacher and a grandmother of two students attending BPS. I'm here tonight to participate in the discussion of one of the most critical decisions a board makes, a vote on the renewal of a superintendent's contract. And this is not merely a procedural vote, it is a decision that will profoundly shape the trajectory of a school district for years to come. I stand before you tonight to advocate unequivocally for the renewal of our superintendent's contract, building upon a foundation of proven success and a clear vision for the future. We all understand the immense responsibilities that come with this position and the challenges that constantly emerge. It requires not only a strategic vision, but a deep commitment to every student in our district. And our current superintendent has demonstrated these qualities, not just adequately, but exceptionally. I had the privilege of being a teacher under his first two years as a superintendent and while retired, both as a volunteer and a community member, which has given me the opportunity to see the impact of the superintendent's vision from two different perspectives. Mr. Yano has fostered an environment of collaboration and support, starting with the strong partnerships with agencies and community organizations through the CPAC Committee. He began, and the extraordinary back-to-school extravaganza, which is in year two, and to all the exceptional work around Portrait of a Graduate, which has thrived under his leadership. Academically, our students are thriving. We've witnessed a notable improvement in graduation rates, which have steadily increased, improvements in math and English language arts standardized test scores, and showing significant gains in both literacy and mathematics across our grade levels. We have seen an improvement in attendance as well. And these are not mere statistics. They represent real children achieving real success. This progress is a direct reflection of the instructional leadership and focus on student success championed by our superintendent. Renewing this contract isn't just about acknowledging past successes, it's about investing in continued progress and stability. It ensures that our district maintains experienced leadership, a consistent direction, and the momentum to build on the significant achievements already made. Disruption at this critical juncture would risk derailing the positive trajectory we are on. Therefore, I urge each and one of you to really consider the comprehensive evidence of our superintendent's performance, his strong leadership, and collaborative spirit, and how it has benefited our students and district. Because ultimately, that's what it's all about. It's about our students and nothing else. And frankly, given the demonstrated success and positive trajectory of our district under his guidance, not renewing this contract simply makes no sense. Let us vote to renew his contract so we can provide the stability and the continuity our students, staff, and community deserve. Thank you.
Jessica Mercado.
Good evening, Board members and community members. My name is Jessica Mercado. I have had the pleasure of working with the Vineland Public Schools Districts for 21 years and counting. I'm also a proud parent of an upcoming junior and a long-life member of this community for over 30 years. I am here today to share my thoughts on the Agenda Item 7B. Having seen past superintendents, some of which have been quite effective, I can honestly say that none have matched the dedication and leadership of our current superintendent, Mr. Yano. He has been a committed, highly-visible leader within our school, community, and steady presence, collaborative spirit, and strong focus on student success. Have truly made him a valued pillar of our district. His contract is now up for review, and I believe that both the district and our community would benefit greatly from renewing it. Considering the positive impact of his leadership, he has done an exceptional job, boasting morale across our schools, our community, and among our students, which is something Vineland hasn't experienced at this level before. Given the accomplishments we have sincerely, we would hate to see him, we would hate to lose him, or any positive energy our community spirit has gained, especially during the difficult times that we're now facing, as our fractured nation desperately searches for unity and renewed hope. And finally, to Mr. Yano, thank you.
No more yellow sheets. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Superintendent, recommendation?
Excuse me, I guess we have one more. Please give us your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Turner, and I just wanted to come and speak on behalf of the VHS superintendent. I am a resident of Vineland. I'm also a student of Vineland High School. I'm also alumni of Landis Middle School and an alumni of Vineland High School, and a proud father of two small children who attend Vineland School District. I am in strong agreement with the other speakers who have spoken out tonight for Mr. Yano. He has stood tall in the face of adversity in a variety of school-community issues and student achievement. As evident here tonight, his collaborative spirit and positive relationships, not only with the Vineland Education Association, but also he has the full support of the district's administration, which I think is highly important. In a day when DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, is unpopular, Mr. Yano has gone the extra mile, not only to hear community concerns, but he has collaborated with the community to add value to marginalized voices and groups. I have been blessed to be a part of this Equity Committee that he meets with on a monthly basis. Collaboration and shared visions are not buzzwords for Mr. Yano. They are actually action words that he models and takes seriously. So I just wanted to share my support for Mr. Yano, tell him thank you, and continue to do what you're doing. Thank you.
Superintendent, recommendations?
Requesting discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1 through 1.6.
And I believe Ms. Grace has a statement about 1.6.
And I believe a couple of board members may have a couple of questions about that one, too.
Yes, so if I may, just on item 1.6, I just want to clarify that any decisions pursuant to that resolution from June 26, 2025, through August 6, 2025, will be placed on the agenda for board approval and ratification at the August 6, 2025 meeting.
Ms. President?
Does this resolution include terminations? I saw it was all about hiring. Is terminations included in this resolution?
Specifically to hiring to prepare for September.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Will we still be meeting for Policy and Personnel Committee meeting?
July.
We'll meet at the end of July for the August, to prepare for the August meeting. We'll review all of the recommendations that have been made through the month of July, so you'll see all of that in writing.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes, to all, except I recuse myself from 1.3.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I would like to congratulate Dana Blakely for taking on the position of Director of Transportation. Let's hear it for Dana.
Deep breath. First, I have to thank God for his guidance, his grace, and his strength throughout this entire journey. I actually, really want to thank the board, the board members, the administration, for believing in me and giving me this opportunity to be here and serve as the supervisor of people transportation. I want to thank my husband, my children, my mentor, my grandchildren, they've all been my foundation, my support, my backbone, just there for me all the time. I have to give it up for my amazing team that's here with me for always supporting me, believing in me, and keeping me on my toes at all times. Just thank you for everything that you guys have done for me throughout my journey at the Board of Education, and I continue to think I'm going to take registration and transportation to new heights. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Procedures and Operations Items 2.1 through 2.6.
Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion is carried.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Buildings and Grounds Item 3.1.
Before we, I just want to tell people what this is. It's Vineland High School South Complex, being used by the City of Vineland. Fireworks Friday, July 4th, rain date, July 5th. City of Vineland Police Department National Night Out, Tuesday, August 5th, and Family Night and Trunk or Tree Event, Tuesday, October 21st. Questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Requesting discussion and approval regarding Finance Items 4.1 through 4.23.
Questions or comments? Motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by Board members, Superintendent's Contract of Employment Renewal.
Madam President, move to provide notice to the Superintendent of nonrenewal of his present contract expiring on July 30, 2026.
Is there a second?
I have, excuse me.
I'm going to do questions.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Mr. Bono.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to use a football analogy. Four years ago, our team, this district, was on the one-yard line on the wrong side of the field. We were just going through the pandemic. We were, we were questioning where to go next. Around that time is where Mr. Yano came in. Since that time, our team has been marching down the football field, has been marching, making plays, a pass here, a pass there, a run here. And we see it evident by some of the individuals that spoke tonight, and we see it evident as a high school graduation rate passed right down the middle. Portrait of a graduate, ninth-grade academy, CPAC engaging the community like never before. Promotions of some of our best and brightest to positions of vice principal and principal. The relaunch of the Violin Education Foundation. Armed guards that was discussed for years, and we finally got it done. Attendance is up across the district. Test scores are up across the district. And bringing individuals from the outside of our district that fit great with the culture that we're currently building here in Violin. The student-led meetings of high school students and middle school students, engaging them to see what they would like to experience here at Violin Public Schools. So, right now, it is not the time to change the quarterback. Right now is not the time to get the backup of the third string to continue this drive that we have towards the end zone. It is not. It would be foolish, in my opinion, to do that. And this is not a knock against any of my fellow board members. I respect each and every one of their opinions. Each and every one of them, I respect. But in my opinion, it is not time to change our quarterback. Not only this, but our community deserves to weigh in on this matter. Parents of this school district do not know this is occurring tonight. Teachers, educators, administrators do not know or did not know until a couple hours before this meeting, this was occurring tonight. It is not fair to have, not have all our stakeholders weigh in on a very important decision, a decision that's going to affect our school district for years to come. And personally, as a parent of children in this school district, I have the full confidence in Mr. Yano that he is doing the job that we tasked him to do four years ago. I am fully confident that with his leadership and with this board, we are going to reach that end zone. And I am fully confident that he is the man for the job, right now and for years to come. So that's why I am in support of renewing his contract for the determined amount of time that we determine, but I am, I am in full support of that. And Solicitor, I have a question. This vote tonight, is it based on the current individuals that are here as board members? Or is it based on the quorum that's allowed? Because obviously, we have one board member that's not here.
Sure. So pursuant to NJSA 18A 17-15, it's actually based on the full majority membership of the board. So it would be the total nine.
Okay. So I, I have a proposal. I propose that we postpone this vote. And and have a proper conversation regarding this involving all stakeholders, because this is a giant decision. We are only in year two of a five-year plan. We need to see this out. We need to see the progress that I know is going to happen, and it is currently happening, and we need to see it come to fruition. So I propose that we, I propose an amendment that, or propose a resolution that we push this further down the road at a determined amount of, whenever we decide that. But I, I motion tonight to vote to table this resolution.
Second.
Is there any more discussion, or is Dennis the only one?
So, so right now, there's a motion to table on the floor.
Correct.
Cedric seconded. What did you say, Ron?
I said, is any other board member allowed to speak, or is?
Everybody's allowed to speak.
Oh, yeah, all right. So Dennis, thank you for your words. The, the bar, in my opinion, in our district, needs to get set higher. A lot of things over this past year and a half that I've been on this board, it seems like we keep lowering the bar and expectation for our students. Athletics, we always had a high standard for our athletes in Violin, always. We lowered the grade point average down to, I believe, 1.95, I believe, is what it is. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. Days absent, we have a big truancy problem in our district. It was brought to my attention by our Guidance Department that students were allowed to graduate this year that didn't uphold the standard. Me being a business person in the City of Violin, I take that very serious. I'm also a graduate of Violin, class of 95. I worked very hard. Education didn't come easily to me. I had to work extra hard. I had to go to school, I had to go to class, I had to pay attention, I had to stay after, get tutors, I had to work very hard. But I, when I went to the high school, I took that very serious, worked hard to get my diploma. It's not just a piece of paper that we hand out at the end of every school year. There were students that graduated this year with over 50 days' absence. The state requires 10%, okay, at a level. Why are we lowering our standard and allowing kids to graduate with over so many days' absence? We're, again, continuing to lower our standard for our students, and I'm not okay with that. We need to raise the bar. A lot of these things that were discussed tonight are because we have a cohesive board that are helping drive and make these decisions happen. Yes, we do. We do have a cohesive board, and we work together to achieve all these things that are happening. This tonight presentation, Violin and Rutgers Public Schools Collaborative, that's a great thing for our district. We've been saying it for a long time. Why aren't we listening to our staff members? But you, you talked about employee morale. I don't know what you guys are hearing on employee morale, but I'm hearing the exact opposite of what I saw tonight, okay? And I appreciate every one of you, and I know some of you guys that came to the microphone tonight, and your words mean a lot. They really do. This is not an easy decision for us board members, okay? But there's also some things that are behind the scenes that we do as board members that the public's not savvy to, just like the things that you do with Superintendent Yano that we're not savvy with. We're not here for the day-to-day operations. We don't get to see him at that level, unless we take the time, like I have, and I've worked side-by-side with Mr. Yano at the schools, at the student meetings, the one that I mentioned tonight with this collaboration. It's a beautiful thing. It really is. So I see the really good in Superintendent Yano, but I also see some stuff that I really have a hard time with and I struggle with. And me as a board member, I have the right for that opinion. Again, I, I work closely with, with everyone, and Superintendent Yano knows my feelings. We've talked. We have an open, open dialogue. If I ever have an issue, I bring it to his attention. I've sat with him in his meetings or one-on-one meetings in his office, and we talk about it. But the standard, I feel like we just keep lowering the bar and making exceptions for students that really aren't doing their part. You bring in community to help these students. Bring the parents in. If the parents aren't okay with a good, proper education, we need to educate them. We need to bring them in, sign the contract for our students, just like all the other schools do in other districts around, okay? We should be upping the bar, not lowering it. That's where my head is at. And we are moving in the right direction, and I think we can, and we can continue to do that, but we have to take a closer look at raising the bar. And being, you mentioned the word trust and honest. We have to be trust and trustworthy and honest to the entire board and the entire community, not just the people that are making the decisions, you know? If you make a mistake, own it, and let's talk about it. Don't sugarcoat it, and don't pass the buck to somebody else, okay? So that's, that's my take, and we are heading in the right direction, Dennis and I, and it's a big part of the entire team. Excuse me, sorry. Thank you.
May I?
So?
Can I respond to some of the points that he made before, or? Just want to, you know, the athletics GPA change was a recommendation that came from the Athletic Department, which aligned Violin with NJSIAA. I know it's a change. There was a lot of push to be competitive in all our sports. We push our students to achieve higher than that minimum mark, but we have put our students at a disadvantage, and this came from the Athletics Department, and I supported it because we want our students, because we know athletics saves kids' lives. Kids that are involved in sports, we were needlessly allowing some students to become ineligible. We raised their grades, brought them up, and now they're able to participate. Students allowed to graduate who didn't, who had more than 50 days. The 10% percentage indicates chronic absenteeism only. It does not have anything to do with graduation requirements or attendance requirements. Our attendance policy requires students to be present for a certain amount of the year. So when the student reaches 40 or more days, they're in a non-credit status. The high school administration, for the last two years, for the first time in recent memory, actually, under my direction, used the attendance policy to actually tell students, "Sorry, you can't graduate because you didn't get the courses, you didn't, you weren't in school long enough to accrue credits to get those classes to meet the graduation requirements." We have kids right now who were supposed to graduate, who are signed up for summer courses to retake their, their classes that they didn't get credit for. So I'm not sure where the narrative is, that we're allowing kids to graduate above a certain level. Some kids had challenges. Some kids had medical issues that were significant that required them to be in the hospital for two months. We're not going to penalize those students because they had a medical condition. We're going to support them. Administration will work with those students. That's, I just wanted to, and we discussed this topic, so, so we just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Absolutely, but
Thank you.
The message that I received from Guidance was that the calls were made, and the directive was put out for them to call these students, the parents, to let them know that they weren't going to graduate. And then that changed, and they're upset and wondering why it changed. Obviously, if a student has a health condition, or an IEP, or, you know, behavioral issues, then there's exceptions to be made, but the standard's 10%. And that's 18 days out of 180 days of school, guys. It's not, you know, missing 50 days or 60 days, whatever it is, of school. That, that's, that was my point in the whole.
And I just want to clarify, it was the exact opposite that happened. Kids were told they were going to graduate incorrectly, and it was rescinded when they went back and recalculated and realized that they had made a mistake. And that came from the Guidance Department, and Deb Quinn, our leader at the 1112 Building, she helped educate our folks that they were calculating the information incorrectly. They had to call parents up and tell them, "Sorry, we made a mistake."
Can I see that in writing, or can I get requests, over requests, some type of records on the?
I, I can have the principal of the school provide that.
On the absenteeism in the high school, and the amount of students that graduated over that 10% state level?
But, but it's not 10%. 10% is the chronic absenteeism number.
Historically, it should be 20 days. When I was in high school, couldn't miss more than 20 days. If you did, you had to go to, you know, it was almost like a summer school where you had to make up that time. So what's it called today? I'm sure you have time where these kids can make up their time for being absent.
Right, we have, so students have to, in years past, we had funding to provide summer programs for students to get into a summer program. Now, we have the ability, if a child needs to make up up to two classes, the district pays for the student to enroll in an online program. I think it's called ediscere, right? Ediscere? And so we have students enrolled in that. They have to show evidence that they are enrolled. They have to pass that to get their, to get their diploma, so they're in a, in a non-graduation status. Some of those students that were like two classes away, we let them walk because they showed evidence that their parents had paid for those courses, or we paid for the courses for them. So, but we have a lot of information. We can, we can share that with you.
Yeah, I would love to see it.
Ms. Perez.
So I just wanted to say, Dennis, first of all, I know you didn't mean, I appreciate what you said about not calling us anybody on the board foolish. We work very well together, this board sits together, they talk together, they work together. They're, they're respectful of each other and each other's opinions. I've come to know them as my friends and also have a lot of respect, and they're my colleagues as well. So all I want to say is, the only part that I wanted to say was that I don't know how people don't know that this is on the, my phone has been blowing up. So, and not only with teachers and parents, but with people in the community. So to say that they weren't aware, you know, maybe that's been your, your experience, but it has not been my experience. So I just wanted you to know, and it's obvious by the letters we've been receiving and, and things like that. So it's, they know that it's on the agenda for tonight. So that's all I wanted to say, but I respect what you said. Yeah, you can say whatever.
My clarification was that the community didn't know it was happening tonight.
The people that, okay, so the people that are reaching out to me knew.
Yeah.
I'm just?
I mean, we, we both have a different experience, obviously, but
Yeah, exactly.
And, and that could, that is certainly the case. But everyone that I've, that's contacted me did not know this was happening tonight. It's been, the rumors have been out there for, for a few months.
Yeah.
But they did not know this vote was happening tonight.
And, and mine's been the opposite, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Rivera, you said this wasn't a knock on any particular board member, and then you said we'd be, we were, we were being foolish. Is that what you said?
That is what I said, yes.
Well, I don't appreciate that comment, because I may be a lot of things, but I'm not foolish, and I take this very, very seriously. We're talking about this man's employment and the future of the school district, and our children, our staff, and our taxpayers. It's about the most important thing I've ever done, and I don't consider myself foolish.
The decision, I said was foolish. I did not say the individual was foolish.
Excuse me?
Said the decision would be foolish, not any certain individual was foolish.
Ergo, the people making the decision were being foolish by doing so.
Okay, we, we have a, we have a difference of opinion.
I'm offended by it anyway.
So if I could just?
Wouldn't be the first time, John.
If I could just indicate, there is a motion to table on the floor, and that's a procedural motion, not a substantive motion. So at this point, Ms. Cottisbody, if we can just work out the motion to table, which, again, it's a procedural motion that needs the majority of the present members, not the majority of the full membership. So that would be four affirmative votes.
I believe Mr. Holmes seconded that motion, didn't you? Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Bono?
This is to what? Explain, please.
So this is the present motion to table the?
To delay the vote this evening.
That was proposed for 7B, correct?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
No.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Silva, you have to recuse yourself, I'm sorry.
I recused myself. My vote is going to be yes, though.
Mr. Sabrana?
No.
Mrs. Cottisbody? The motion to table does not carry. With a vote of three yeses and four noes and one recusal.
Now, that being said, Sandra, correct me if I'm wrong, you mentioned that the entire board has to be here for?
No, I was just mentioning what membership is necessary for procedural versus substantive motion.
Understood.
So at this point, we revert back to the initial motion at hand in terms of the non-renewal. So, Ms. Cottisbody, you're more than welcome to open it up for additional discussion or the vote.
Is there any more additional discussion to that? We had a motion and second.
Mr. Bono?
Clarification, please. We are voting yes on renewing, or, again, are we voting yes to renew?
So the statute says that the board is obligated to provide notice of non-renewal, so I understand, it's a little bit of a double negative here. So the motion pending is to provide notice of non-renewal, so a yes would mean that there would be no renewal. Does that make sense, Ms. Rivera?
It does, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Sure. The motion is to provide notice of non-renewal.
Okay, my vote is no.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
No.
Mr. Silva must recuse himself, correctly?
That's correct.
Mr. Silva?
I recuse myself, but it's still a no.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
I believe the motion does not carry, as it requires a majority of the full board, which would be five votes. We have four yes votes, three no votes, and a recusal.
And one absenteeism, correct, so the motion does not carry.
Motion does not carry.
Bill Payless. Do we have a motion and second?
So moved.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Holmes?
Just a question. Sandra, where do we go from here based on the vote for the superintendent's contract tonight?
So the statute does not require there to be notice of renewal, it just requires statute of, sorry, notice of non-renewal. So should there be no notice of non-renewal up until January 31st, 2026, then the contract, the existing term is essentially extended for the same term automatically, five years?
So we have until January 31st, 2026?
Correct, to provide notice.
Very good.
I just have a question, and I need to recess with Ms. Grace for a second.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Board member comments? Mr. Rivera?
No further comment.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, just want to take a minute, I know we're beyond it, just want to explain my vote.
Can't hear you.
I want to explain my vote. I don't think I made a lot of friends tonight, I made some enemies. This is my first time on the board, I have been up for two days. I want people to know I've received all your texts, all your calls, I listened to them all, didn't have conversations, for those that I told, "I can't talk about it because I'm not on the board," that's just the rules. I don't agree with having to vote for a person's contract a year before the contract is expired. Having said that, I'm in this position. I've had people tell me abstain, I've had people tell me, "Don't show up." For me, that's, and I don't want to call anybody names and make a mistake, but for me, that's not the right thing to do. For 30 years, I was a law enforcement officer, and I don't run from my responsibility. For those that have enlightened me on things that were said about me, I'm not going to make it about me, but I heard, I heard the things that were said about me during my election, has nothing to do with tonight, and that didn't play into me, play into my decision. This is not about me tonight, I just wanted to take a minute to explain my vote, and for those that were my friend prior to this, I'm sure you'll be my friends afterwards. The good thing about it is, for those who weren't really my friends, and now they're mad with me, mad enough where they're not going to come around, well, then they weren't my friends anyway. My last point, I want to say congratulations to Dana. She deserves it, I wish her the best, if there's anything I can do, let me know. And I was fortunate to be a juvenile officer, and I know when you need things done, who are the people that you call. And now she's in a key position, I wish her the best. I hope I was able to explain myself a little more, and thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Just wanted to congratulate Ms. Blakely, looking forward to working with you, and that's it for me.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, I could jump out of my seat right now, just, you know, if you don't, and I don't want to be religious, but if you don't believe in prayer, you really should, because I've been praying on this literally since and after. Things that were coming against Mr. Yano, as you can see, prayer works, and Mr. Bono, to any of your concerns, all of these things can be worked through. And it's just a discussion that you need to have, and trust that administration, not only Mr. Yano, but his central office and our building administration that's here tonight, they're doing what's right by our kids every single day. So saying things like, you know, taking a guidance counselor's word over a superintendent and principals that sit out here tonight, that, you know, doesn't sit well with me. We have to build trust between board and superintendent, and I shook my head when you said cohesive, because as you can see, this is a split board when it comes to the superintendent, and we've known that for the past at least year and a half. Yes, so we have to work together, and it's a partnership, and everyone's got to come to the table and be honest, and be forthright in their dealings, and not say one thing to the superintendent, one thing to me, and one thing out in the streets. Yes, absolutely, thank you, sir. Thank you, good night.
Mr. Bono?
I'd like to congratulate the entire class of 2025 on their graduation. Congratulations to Mrs. Blakely, good luck in the position. It's a tough department down there from right here, but I think you can handle it. And enjoy your summer for everyone that has the next two months off. Thank you.
Ms. Perez?
Mrs. Blakely, congratulations, I hear great things about you, so you bring them to higher levels, like you said, you go, girl, take care of business. Mr. Harris, I will always be your friend, you're a good man, and as we've spoken, this whole board, these are people with integrity, these are good people, okay? We have difference of opinions on certain things, we bring different things to the table, and I've been praying as well, Cedric, I've been praying as well, I've been praying for my fellow board members, and I've been praying for Mr. Yano, and I've been praying for this decision. These decisions do not, do not, do not come lightly. We do stay up at night, we care about not only Mr. Yano, not only the central administration, but we care about the teachers, we care about the administrators, and let me tell you, we care about the children. So I have the utmost respect for each and everyone, they stood on their conviction, and now we just keep moving forward and doing what's the best for the, what do you say, Mr. Rivera, we're the best school district in New Jersey. Have a great evening, everyone.
Mr. Sabrana?
Ms. Blakely, did they give you a 10-gallon hat and a badge so you could say there's a new sheriff in town? For three decades now, 20 as an employee and 10 sitting up here, all I've been hearing, not all, many times I've been hearing about, quote-unquote, "The mess in transportation." I don't believe it's a mess, but there's obviously lots of work to do. I wish you the best of luck, I know we're all committed to helping you any way we can, and so have at it. I wish all of our students a safe summer, and our staff a little bit of rest, anyway, and blink your eyes and you'll be back doing it again. Thank you.
Mr. Yano?
Yes, congratulations to the class of 2025. Incredible ceremony, the threat of rain was on the horizon, we kept it moving quick, and we shut it down just in time. A huge shout-out to everyone who made that day possible, our security team, our transportation team, our teachers, our administrators at the high school, I see Mr. Adams in the back over there, I know everyone was stressed in facilities, the work that they did to get everything ready, and also our city officials, Lou Tramitana, who helped organize, you know, the city's response and support through our police department, our EMS, and boy, was EMS on call. We were filling up those ambulances with folks who were just not feeling great in that heat. So overall, amazing day, kids are excited, we're working with the class president, Michaela Giuliani, to find a way to have an opportunity for those students who are interested to have an experience at the high school, where we can have our speeches, do the awards, the part of the graduation that was not, we weren't able to complete. So I know Ms. Cottisbody is also involved in that as well, and Deb Quinn, and Mr. Adams, and Mr. Masonant, as he takes leadership in July. We also kicked off our Admin Academy today, which was an awesome day with our new administrators that just got the job, and our administrators who've been around, and administrators who are retiring and leaving us. We worked on Danielson today, our teacher evaluation tool, super exciting, tomorrow we'll go into school law and inclusive education. We want to wish all of our students, families, staff members a wonderful summer, stay healthy and safe, wishing our board members some rest through the month of July, we don't have a board meeting, which is exciting for all, stay healthy, safe, and look forward to seeing you again, you know, our board in August and our students in September, so thank you so much.
All right. I'd like to congratulate the class of 2025, it was a very fast-moving, fast-paced graduation. It was kind of exciting, because one minute I went to take a drink at Gatorade, poor Cedric's handing it to me, and the name started getting read really, really, really fast, and then I see Mr. Yano and Ms. Quinn running up the side, "We got to get going, we got to get going," so, but it was a wonderful graduation, I hope we can do what Ms. Giuliani wanted us to. I need to thank all of our teachers and staff for what a wonderful year, I hope those of you that can get a little bit of a rest, get some rest. Ms. Blakely, I've heard so many good things about you, especially from Mr. Harris, so I wish you well, and I truly believe that you're going to be able to do what you said. To my fellow board members, this was a tough decision, and a lot of angst for a lot of people, not one person in here made a decision very lightly, there's been many, many sleepless nights, many days. Most of us have full-time jobs, and we're still doing this. This isn't just a once-a-month thing, this is a 24/7 for many board members, and I respect all my board members. Mr. Harris, we have been friends for years in the past, and we're going to be friends for years in the future. Not many, there are, you know, not everybody's going to have or agree on every decision, we just have to be able to work together. So with that being said, I hope everyone has a great summer, don't forget the fireworks next weekend here, and then nationally out in August, which is the night before our board meeting, so have a great night, do I have a motion to adjourn? On favor, we have executive.